Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our property subcommittee meeting of August 15th at 9:00 a.m. And Pete's Architects has supplied us with some concepts and some spreadsheet on space allotments and what they think potential project costs would be. And now we've got to start figuring out how do we start moving forward. So I would say at this time, I turn it over to Kevin from Pete's Architects and see what he's got to tell us today.
Okay, just kind of going through the agenda here. So the first thing is contract progress. We've got the contract by Doc design and we just haven't seen, I guess, the final signed version yet.
That should have came in your work assignment, should have received a copy because I know it's finalized.
Yeah, and maybe Kerry, who's been out with COVID, has got it in her inbox.
Because it's been signed.
Okay.
And yeah, it was, we received it last week.
Okay, I checked with our accounts person this morning and she said she hasn't seen it.
I can forward a copy.
Kerry hasn't been.
I can forward you a copy if you want.
No, I'll take a look maybe though. All right, just wanted to review the schedule. That's what's up on the screen there. We've kind of slipped by a couple of weeks from the original schedule just because of summer issues. Hopefully that's not going to create too big of an issue.
Well, I'm scheduled. I was talking to Deb this morning about the next meeting, just trying to get into some other sequence. Starting another week or so, we're going to be back in session. So at nine o'clock in the morning, me and Bobby are going to work for majority of the team. And I'm not speaking to either one of you, but I'm going to try to advocate for you as well. My recommendation would be, knowing that we have to move to an after-school meeting time, to realign it to the board meetings in the around three o'clock. That gives us a couple of hours to meet as this subcommittee, and you're already here before board, it just avoids multiple days we come on campus. That'd be my recommendation. And if that's support by the team, that means the next meeting would be September 20th, starting at three o'clock. And that is a little delayed. The issue would be the upswing of preparing the campus for the first day of school and another weekend ahead, so I just put that out there as a theme of discussion.
Sounds like a reasonable suggestion. And I'm a little concerned about not meeting, this committee not meeting again for another
What I'm sure will be the 30th, August 30th. Now Deb would not be here if you don't think so. That's day number two for school.
I won't be here for that one and I won't be able to make the ones prior to the board, but I think I can, I have plenty of opportunity to cross over. So even though I'm sharing that, I don't think my schedule should, because I have a school council. So I don't think my schedule should drive it, but I have plenty of opportunity to cross over with Tim, Crystal and that's the way.
All right, so what are you suggesting, Andy? When would the next meeting, when, 20th or 2nd?
We could go, well, we could go with August 30th at three o'clock. Deb would not be here and we could take the notes.
Okay.
And next would be, my recommendation would be September 20th, which is the September 4th meeting, also three o'clock. So if you want to meet before the 20th, I would recommend the 30th. You just need to call.
Well, I think it's important we keep this process going. Can I, what do you, what's everybody else thinking? The 30th? Yes, okay. Let's plan for the 30th at 3:00 p.m., is that correct?
Yes.
And then we have the board meeting, the 20th at 5:00. And I think we should also target that date, meet at 3:00 p.m. All right, so you got Deb established. Let's go from there. That work for Kevin and?
Yeah, well, I think we need to kind of look at what comes out of this meeting here. You know, it's going to be some, I don't know, some discussion about, you know, the siting of the building because of, you know, kind of the proportions of the building that we're kind of figuring out as we're, as we're kind of looking at things. And so, you know, it might give us an opportunity, if it is delayed a little bit, to put, get some options together. And, but let's kind of peek down and see where we land after this.
Right, okay.
All right, so the next, the next item is the program spaces. So we had, what we looked at last time was the whole program options. And that was the different spaces at, out of the full, the full size and, you know, the classrooms being 1,000 square feet. And there's a few other spaces that, you know, could possibly be reduced. And this is, you know, kind of following your direction to see if there are spaces that could be reduced. So I kind of need your input on this because I can't make this decision on my own. So the next one is the reduce, you know, we saved 2,200 square feet, you know, with this, which, you know, when you translate that into dollars per, you know, multiply that by the dollars per square foot, you know, it's kind of, it ends up being substantial. So, you know, so basically what I did is, you know, I took four classrooms from 1,000 square feet to 800 square feet. That might be, you know, more than you can do, but depending on how many kids are in individual classes. We still have the larger, more cultural classroom that we're kind of keeping, that's the same level. Or it's a shop that's taking that from 2,200 down to 2,000. And I think I brought it up to 2,200, kind of add a little space for, I don't remember what it was, but it made sense when I looked at the program originally, the way it was described in that written program, that it might be better with a couple hundred more square feet. So I just brought that down to where I think it was originally suggested. The equipment repair shops, we had three at 1,000 square feet. They were reset to three at 900 square feet. And this is just how, kind of the way that we were discussing it last time, I think a two bay and then a single bay space. Then outdoor, bringing that down a little bit, just a little outpost on hallway, we're thinking about headhouse, bringing that from 1,800 square feet. Just looking at ways to try and, you know, make some reductions in the size of the building. And, you know, we're still looking at, you know, overall building up 21,820 with the reduced square foot. So still, you know, I think when you're thinking about cost, still a good sized building, good sized cost. And I've put some cost down here just to kind of asset things. And, you know, I, we do have a basement level, which is just the, you know, equipment storage area underneath at the, we stand in the building where it goes downhill. And so these are pre, you know, before we have like, I think it was before markups and all that, and all the soft costs, so that's kind of where that.
What were those? The two total lines at the bottom? We have a different version of the budget.
Yeah, that's what I was just kind of, we have, Kevin. Yeah, your option would be reduced. We don't have this side bar.
Right.
Okay, so my guess is we took this and created that next version.
Yeah, so we can send this to you after this meeting.
Okay.
Can you differently tell me what those two amounts are at the bottom?
This is 6,000, 6,912,500 and then 7,900. And that's based on like a range of 350 to 400 square feet, or dollars per square foot. So, I mean, the way we're approaching this and thinking about it is that, you know, you're not getting state assistance on this, you know, in the form of like MSBA. And so we're really looking at it as like, what can we do to try to keep all the costs down? And if that's going to come into play and, you know, how the building gets constructed and how the building gets sited. Because, you know, there's a lot of factors that will add cost, you know, in the project. And so we're trying to consider all that. So like I said, those numbers, you know, I think you have the full, some more full version there that has.
Yeah, this was in the package.
Yeah, markups and, markups and soft costs added, you know.
Yep.
And those are just my guesses, so please don't hold, hold me too much. All right, so I guess, you know, is there, you know, do you want to kind of digest this and maybe get back to us on the space reductions? You know, what we're going to show you is based on, you know, after this, kind of based on the full program. And so, you know, if we can reduce the spaces to what we're suggesting, you know, help out.
At some point today, I'm not sure when, I can, between all of us, we can put out an update that probably is where we are financially. But out there, not even close to be honest. So I'm not sure if we want that conversation now or if we want to go through all the, you know, updates and we talk as a team?
Um, I think all of the above is important, obviously. I would certainly like to hope we start moving forward in some end game idea and charge, create another subcommittee of some sort, being the finance, let the property people do their part in saying, this is what we'd like to do. Okay, finance, get us the money. How are we going to get there? Not can we get there, but how are we going to get there?
Is this piece something you designed in regards to bonding or something?
Place black on that too.
Yeah.
So obviously appreciate this, this thinking ahead in terms of this. To be honest with you, I feel a little blindsided, not knowing some of the things that are developing behind the scenes. And maybe I take some of the blame there, not communicating maybe with you and Tim in that and where we're going with everything.
So Levon, this literally came to us 15 minutes ago.
There's some that.
So I think maybe at this time, we talk about the finance.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I want Kevin to be on board and kind of know where we're at, so I need you to keep asking because I didn't, but I want to make sure we're on the same page. Financially, we're not in a good position, as the clip notes. The insurance, we did get an estimate last week, I think, from the insurance company, whether they're going to pay out the structure. Best case scenario, we're looking at, I think, 940,000 insurance. But that includes debt home costs, includes the architect contract and everything else. So that 940 probably would be, gets closer to the 850 or so, throwing out random numbers here. So we're not talking about 1.4 million in insurance, probably 850. At some point, we'll have an estimate from the insurance company on equipment, in places. And we've talked about that, I think the max is 250 or so, I think we were insured. We're not going to see that, obviously, because we lose all the equipment. And that's why we've been looking for those donations, receiving a lot of donations in particular, health. So how much of the equipment insurance can be applied to the building? I'm just talking like on a thousand. So again, we're still shy in a million dollars in insurance total. The grant that we submitted, I think that Joe and Melanie submitted the skills capital grant about a week and a half ago, where we can apply 30% of that to reinforce construction costs. Unfortunately, poor Joe was here until well past the business day of Friday. The state has come back and is asking for more information, more information, more information. This included photographs, a narrative to explain the photographs, explanation of why we want the equipment that we're asking for. So I'm a little conservative about how they're going to award that particular grant. I was hoping 600,000 of that can be applied to the building. I don't know where you're going with that. There was the other grant I referenced to the board, we will apply as this comes out, that's a larger skills capital grant. My concern with that is in order to have 70% of that grant applied to the construction costs, we need to ask for a lot of the money for that 70% to get bigger. And as I mentioned earlier today outside this meeting, 70% of a dollar versus 70% of a million dollars, I want to ask for a lot of money. So that 70% gets bigger, we're going to apply more to the building. The challenge is, if we're being nickel and dime by the state to explain the equipment we're asking for at this rate, what equipment, having asked for it, you have every day asked for the next one. And that list is going to be, we're asking for dump truck, we've asked for a dockload, we've asked for a lot of equipment in this round. But best case scenario, we still come up, still get to that $4 million range, give or take, most likely if all those ducks line up, somewhere around the 4 million. This is where this came about, just so we're all on the same page. Again, we're trying to avoid MSBA for many reasons. This is a time crunch, we need to build the building as soon as possible. MSBA is a very long process, which we talked about in the past. MSBA also complicates things with these grants that we're applying for. So we try to avoid MSBA. Talking internally, outside this particular committee, we're wondering what the feasibility would be if the city was able to bond this particular project. And could we go through the city, have them bond the project, and then perhaps we pay the city back in a revenue source. So I charged Crystal to have some of those initial conversations, as she did, I thank Crystal for that. One issue is, we can't use operating money for such a thing that applies, that goes towards our national spending makers. So we have to find a revenue source outside of our operating budget. So I would recommend we be cell tower revenue. That's approximately $2,000 a month of immediate cell tower revenue. So what we literally just, that's right before this meeting, we asked the city, you know, what would it look like between 10 million and 15 million for bond? Thinking that could handle this particular building project, what we were talking about. We obviously have other, we add complex renovations that we're trying to do, companionals and whatnot. We wanted to see what would it look like? So that's what you have in front of you. And just to highlight, that orange box, that's a 30-year bond for 10 million at 4% interest, which is kind of the going rate right now. I just want to highlight to the committee that year one, that's our bottom line, it would cost us $346,666 for the year. Divide by that, divide that by 12 months, you're looking at a monthly payment of just over $20,000. Our cell tower revenue is $2,000. We can't clutch that. So we're going to, it's pouring cold water on the party here, I'm sorry for that, but we can't clutch 10 million for a bond project. Back to the 4 million that we may have between insurance and keep our fingers and toes crossed, that we grant will come out and in our favor, if we can add up 4 million, could a bond be much smaller to help get closer to what we talked about that Kevin, this year ago? I'm thinking like a $2 million bond maybe. I just, I, without word approval, I would not necessarily recommend that we spend every cent of the cell tower revenue every month. There's a great stage in that we need to have at school. I'm just trying to be sustainable. As I said in the past, I loosely open this, we don't have to worry about the finances to, you know, as a property, but I don't want Kevin to be going full speed ahead on a building project that we didn't even came before. So I just want to make sure we have this conversation set up. So I do apologize that this is last minute, but this is not good news, honestly. I don't see how we afford to develop on it. Doctor mentioned that you go around the bottoms of 15, where they hand 30 years versus 10 So my question is, how do we, you know, what, what does a building project look like for a 4 to maybe a $6 million project? And Kevin, giving some examples of cutting down construction costs, if we steal building ideas and other options, do we have to look at the existing building, not knocking the existing building down? How do we save the current garage in the headhouse and the one classroom? Do we maintain that structure, make it look nicer, and build a octave? I want to thank both of board members last meeting, mentioning the forestry building. You know, if we look at the forestry building as part of this project, do we bring utilities up there, use that current structure to help meet some of the needs that we've identified? I know there's a lot, but I think we do need to have a plan today so we can be good
Well, I certainly agree with the concept that we need to plan today or very soon to be able to start figuring out what direction we are moving forward in. And we know the reality is, yes, this is what we should be doing. We should be rolling the dice and trying to get this, this project moving forward in, not just a fix-it mode, but a future mode. And how, how do we get there in dollars? You're just presenting a scenario where it doesn't seem practical or realistic. Have we shaken all the trees, bushes, what other avenues? I don't know. I don't know the process the way you do, obviously. And just trying to.
Shaking the estate tree, which we were hoping that the tree would shake for us. As we know, Senator Comerford put in a part of the economic development bill, 2025,000, 274,000, 1,000 plus, you can build a contract, along with a million dollars for the school pay cell center. That economic development bill has stopped.
Stopped.
Because of the revenue access the state has, the governor identified the law that was passed back in the late 80s, it stopped that 500, so I don't see the state money coming from that.
True. Yes, certainly.
From a, from my perspective, I think, I would like to move in the direction of, what is, what is it that we really need and hope for? And then if other funding sources come in, is it designed in such a way that we have the capacity to add up? From my perspective, I would suggest us designing that way. So when I initially look at this, I think we have two serviceable greenhouses. I think those can come off the list. The 1,800 square foot garage, I think having a design is good, but I think it should come off of that list because I think that's something that we can build internally. You know, if that's tuition revolving or if that's other funding source. So I do think there's things like that that we can begin to, to remove from the plan. And as I look, I really like this flow sheet. You know, I do like the idea of trying to keep four or five classroom spaces. But because if we are able to bring water, electricity out at this forest, does that decrease the garage space that we need to build here because maybe some of the heavy machinery? The, the school's educational goals and the instructor's goals is that at some point, the plan was always to move the bulk of the heavy machinery up there to clear out that space again and to replicate what used to happen in the bar, what is now was sold to the hospital. And replicate them to be able to mover, dig ditches, practice with the equipment in the large open airspace. And I do think electricity and water would put us to a point where we could actually replicate that training up there and that becomes something that's used on a regular basis, which would minimize the need for some of those spaces here. It would still need the garage space that could house the heavy machinery repaired and their own equipment that would need to be serviced. And maybe the dual purpose that Kevin was suggesting, where the climb, indoor climbing apparatus and things can be there, which is something we could apply for in the next round of the grant, things like that, or the lifts for the lawn mowers and things like that. That's all equipment and machinery that we could apply for in the grant, which would allow us to outfit a building that we built. From my perspective, if I'm looking at what is it we need to fulfill education but still give us a little extra, as, as the hope is to add a teacher and to increase the number of students down there, I think it's the classroom space and that because the campus is their shop and that the building up there is part of their shop. So it's not, it doesn't need to be a self-contained 20,000 square foot because they have, they use the entire campus, they use the woodlot. And I, so I do think that they have an abundance of available space for all the training. That, from my perspective, I, I would recommend us focus.
What, if I can answer this question, what? We've got two weeks, four steps. Tell me what's going to happen in two weeks in regards to kids coming on campus and what your expectations are for that property, which we know is probably not useful for three years. She was kidding.
Yeah, part of it. So thankfully, the team that knocked it out, we might have committed for the demolition. So that get held up because of the time lapse between the fire and now, we did have one bit of demolition. That opens up tomorrow, correct? 24th? Next Wednesday, I'm sorry. So the bid opens up next Wednesday. Fingers crossed that the winning bid will be where did you go? Hoping that following week, that Monday, Tuesday, the games part comes in. So probably the first couple days of school will see demolition. Status on power?
Power, they're, they're going to fire it up today to make sure it works in that front half. And it would just be disconnecting the water from demo and reattaching it after.
Our vision would be one space available for one teacher down there to follow that plays out. And then we have a space for rebuilding for the children. So on day one, we could be ready to be splicing out.
Yeah, day one, the students will have space, the instructors will have spaces. Everybody will be taken care of and hope that, you know, within the first week or two, if not beforehand, the garage is usable, the headhouse, the greenhouse, all that space is usable, lockers, all that, with the back half being demolished and made safe. But that pad will remain, which we can temporarily use as equipment storage.
Sure. So the next challenge is, would we get power to the class, the greenhouses? Now have more, we already talked about what they want to do, but we have a wind blower to clear it out and they're going to drop a 30 amp line down there. So while we build the heat ventilation, what is not going to be the whole service they have, the weather coming out of the smaller, the brick and panels.
What's the potential cost of the demo bid? Do you have any idea? Who submitting bids that, you know, associated?
Yeah, associated with, you were saying when they came out. I don't write it down. I mean, it's already, I might have reached out.
We got three quotes, what time do you get three quotes?
You're tempted to get three? And you're not sure if you are certainly associated?
Someone else developed the bids. Now it's all done, it's on central register.
Okay, anyways, all right. All right. Rewind a bit to what Joe said. I like what you have to say, Joe, about all the spaces and being able to utilize them. Obviously concentrated, it's better, but we don't have that. So we have to be flexible and be able to use all these other spaces in multipurposes. And I'm totally on board, at least my opinion, to get the forestry built in online, get geeky power and whatever we need to do to make that more of a usable space. We have the space, we need to be using it, not just storage. So when you talk about the equipment and being able to move dirt, dig ditches, you're talking up there, correct?
Yes, we have the space. There's a space up there that's probably going to the athletic field here that is primarily open. There's some new growth that's come up that. There's some new growth that's come up, but again, they can practice their trade by clearing the land.
Yeah, by cleaning.
And having it set.
Okay. So-
9,000 percent, I agree. I think the focus here should be your classroom space.
But I like the ideas that Kevin's proposed around some of the, you know, multipurpose spaces and storage and tractor. You know, I like the idea of knocking down that red storage barn that's to the way of the current building. I don't know how much, if the whole thing comes down and it's rebuilt and we are able to do, the finance committee or the board is able to do a $2 to $3 million bond that we can service, that it doesn't put the school in a... I don't want to create, I want to, we want to solve problems. I know we all do. We don't want to create problems for the next set of administrators. You know, I started with Andy the other day. Andy and I will hit retirement age in 13 years. We don't look it, but, you know, I'm 47. And I don't want to have these projects be a ball and chain on the next group that comes in. I also don't, you know, want to undersolve problems. So hopefully, we can find that sweet spot as a committee. But I do think some of it is that multipurpose space, and either we renovate what's left or we are able to find a way to take it all down and at least it's new with enough classroom space and well-thought-out space that is multipurpose.
So I think, you know, our main purpose and mission statement is to get the school open and make it safe for the instructors and the students. As far as slowing everything down, I don't want to put a ball on chain heavily there in regards to, you know, spinning its wheels and everything. We do have a purpose, we do want to fix it. But I think the reality is, and I appreciate Andy throwing the caution flag out in regards to being realist, I know that when David was mayor and Susan Ray was here and we talked about bonding, we have a AAA rating in regards to our city. So I know that we give money. It's just a matter of what the mayor, and again, not burdening that end in regards to having only 20% of the students are in North Hampton. What she'll buy into or what the city will buy into the city council. So there's a lot of pieces, I think. And I leave it up to the chairman, but I mean, as far as the construction of what we can do internally and what we can, you know, I hate to use the term emanate together. But to be fair and realistic, I don't want to put all the burden personally either about, you know, where's the money? I want you to work with the finance committee so that you can spread that out to help people help you with that goal. And I think we need some people from the city involved in that finance piece.
If I may, I think our next step is just have me and the mayor and the city finance director just to, because again, just stop this, just brainstorm and thinking of ideas.
Sure.
Just to see what potential the city will have. Because we can sit here and we get this all day long, but I hope that-
I'm having a deja vu moment. I mentioned that to Mike just a half an hour ago. No, we're all, we're all seem to be on the same page and I'd like to take, or let Joe take the lead in regards to the programming and the facility space required because he's, you're the manager of this place, you're the principal, and you know, should know more than anybody what you need to do for the students. Andy's role is to get us the money, hopefully, and Crystal being the nuts and bolts person of running the numbers and what we can do. And so, yeah, I agree, I totally agree with that. So how do we go about that? And also leave this meeting with giving direction to Kevin.
One more point of information for Kevin though. That second grant that Andy mentioned, we're probably not going to find out about that grant until late December. So this may be something where we're moving forward on a sort of parallel path before we find out what we actually have, try to get sorted out. And then I think I'll inform your decision-making on different directions. But we might want to know till then, but I just can't stop the plan.
We want to spread the money like Andy says, on projection that we don't have, or anticipation. But again, if we start to build on that and it doesn't through again like Joe Comerford, you know, we don't want to be standing here with an empty bag.
That's why I was recommending let's figure out what we need with the ability to add on if we need something.
I agree. Yes, absolutely. And we have these parallel tracks. We need to start moving forward with an end game in mind. We have a basic end game and then we have all these alternate tangents going along with it that we hope maybe to make a reality. And we need to identify those. So are we tasking ourselves here today to start getting heating power up to the forestry building?
3,600 feet up the road.
So you said there's already conduit from Route 9, two-thirds of the way up?
Yep.
And so now we start getting quotes to pull this all together?
Do we need to do any bidding on this or do something? What do we need to do? What's timeline, turn that down? No pressure.
No, I don't know. I don't know, so we're going to go septic.
Right. That's what you're saying.
I don't know, I have the... If I could, if I had right now, it'd still take years to get it out. Let me find, let me get this and see if Sarah will let us up with somewhere. You know, who's Sarah? On conservation. Okay. She kind of held us off the last time I asked her about it. Stay on course.
So you have the knowledge to navigate the process to start moving forward in some sense and getting, working with the city to put it out to bid for, you know, we threw out the idea of septic, which makes sense, instead of trying to bring a line up there, but then we shortchange in ourselves by... Septic's designed appropriately, should be a non-issue, and I got to assume it's a lot cheaper than bringing up a sewer line up the road.
Yep. Building was all fine, just kept away from Route 9. Building should go up back.
Okay. So that was some original thought process when this was all, okay?
And depending on what this costs, then we'll have to find funding source if that is right.
Right.
When we talked to Sarah, I mean, did, where did emerge the situation to do this? I would use that as a pretty good dialogue. You know, you've met with us, the trustees, you know, it's emerged a situation that returns off, it's a great school starting up, so you need a dialogue that's what we want.
So I would just start getting montrak, house, just block between us.
This is what the motion, the board to vote to do that.
Yeah, September 20th, have it updated by then.
It has to be voted to do that.
How many square feet is that garage up there? Like 3,200?
It's suddenly like 40,000.
I thought it was 2,200 square feet somewhere. I don't know why I think that.
So if, so if that become, if we have water power up there, the sewer set up, okay, does that 1,800 square foot tool equipment storage we have here get decreased?
Yep.
And our students are building maybe, you know, a 22 by 40 structure instead? Because we can offset something that's already up there, so that brings that cost down. We won't just end here.
It's deep enough, it's deep enough for two pieces of wood back to back.
Yeah, I think right now you have the trailer and the chipper up there.
Yep.
Not sure what else is up there.
Yeah, definitely, you know, the back hole, those are front of the trucks.
So that stuff can fit there now. Especially if we got the grant, the new piece, she'd probably be a great place to put it up.
Most of the road we want to pin there, can we get in on it?
It's good now. It's good to the cell tower.
It has been up there.
You leave your exhaust pipe there, you know why.
No, I know, I know.
To the cell towers, but there's still other.
Okay, so right now, Tim's tasked to start getting ideas on what it's going to cost to do that. We're going to arrange a meeting with the city in some respects and how is that going to, how is that going to be handled? You'll work with Crystal with that?
Crystal's working with the finance director. We read in a conversation this morning, yeah, this sounds great, but at the end of the day, the mayor needs to-
Okay, so let's target a number of what we're hoping to get to going along with Joe's idea of multi-purposing spaces throughout campus and getting the forestry building online. What are we talking about, four or five million? Let's try to be realist here.
So in this meeting with the mayor, we might be able to find out what the city would be able to contribute. So if they're able to help contribute, that might help raise the number a little bit, so.
Yeah, just trying to get the conversation going.
Yeah, no, no, I totally-
What's our end game?
I'm brainstorming these numbers as the city are thinking of different ways that we could pay for this.
Okay.
So we know we have the trustees meeting coming up on the tour, we want to meet before that.
Well, here, this is what, when you went to the rescue service, this is what we decided, okay?
I didn't have that.
You didn't have that info, that's correct, right there.
Thank you.
All right, so Tuesday, the 30th at 3:00 for this meeting?
Yep.
And then on the 20th, we have the DOT, so we'd also meet again then, okay?
Thank you, appreciate it.
And so in the meantime, Crystal and Andy going to work with the city and try to work numbers, see what we can possibly get without, what, showing our hand? No, seriously, saying, you know, hey, we don't want to go in there and say we want 10, 11, 12. We're going to play it so we can see what we can get.
So again, depending on how they would calculate it and what percentage they are willing to put into this, that would reduce our cost and we can find a way to keep them in the process.
Okay.
And then I'll work, prior to that meeting, I'll work with the instructors and the building level admin and try to come up with a final idea of what really should be the part of it. I have my own thoughts and talking with them that I could share right now, I could have shared something, but I'll get a final of what a minimum design would be.
Okay. Can you expand on what you just said, Joe, please?
Yeah, as I started to say before, the red building came down, if there was a way for us to design a building in such a way or add on and renovate was there so that it wrapped around the existing greenhouse down there? So on Kevin's drawing-
Drawing or the-
The bubble, CAD one. He has a large, he has a part there.
Okay.
Send the packets around. I think the hope would be that if that red structure barn comes down, that, you know, Tim's made the point a couple times and I agree with him, the classroom space around campus needs to be increased, especially with these programs. We're only going to be able to get two, two out of the GCC building that we had hoped for. So I do think if we can get three to five, four or five classrooms, so I don't know if that's that front garage that's currently there down the deck, if that can be renovated into the large classroom, if we were going to go with a renovation scheme. Is there a way for that large, that garage down there to be renovated into the large classroom? We would still have the smaller classroom, we add one or two off the back or one or two off the side where that, the red barn is. And where the headhouse is, create a locker room hallway space that would get you from those classrooms into the headhouse. The other classrooms are there and the headhouse, sort of like where Kevin has the lobby circulation area. If that is the headhouse, because we are maintaining the current greenhouse, if that headhouse becomes sort of that lobby area, if in the front, we renovate to become retail space. So if you're coming in that front space, that's where they can have the headhouse, the retail space, the greenhouse immediately behind it. If you go off to the right, you have classrooms, you go off to the left, you have classrooms, which would then put where he has the greenhouses and the headhouse, maybe all the garage space and storage is in the backside there.
So we go up on the hill to use our repair space for it?
Which would allow, because there's a change in elevation, I think it would allow us to have taller garage spaces. That could be multipurpose with the indoor climbing and the other things, but I would leave that up to their expertise. But I think if I was going to project out, recommend the minimum, what we would need, I think that design would easily fit it because you'd have the two sets of classrooms with the central location being the headhouse and the retail, hallways going off deck, could be locker room spaces, sort of like we currently have. And then as you go deeper into it, you would have the instructor offices, you'd have the garage spaces. It's sort of fitting the footprint that we have, but adding on to where that red storage barn is, that would be my, a recommendation, I think, in talking with Melanie and talking with others that would give us, I think, the minimum, a little more than the minimum of what we need. I mean, it's an improvement and the spaces would be a factor.
Crystal, thought here?
Yes, sir.
In an interim situation with some of our farm animals, are we going to, does any of this affect the animals? What I was thinking is the barn that's down the fairgrounds that we could use for the fair, that, they may have some space down there that if we needed extra, whether for the animals or for a purpose, that we needed a temporary 90-day window or something or stuff for the dry storage. Do you want me to approach the fair on that situation?
I'll defer.
What do you think, Tim?
As far as the animals, it should go like, or currently so.
What about dry storage? I mean, vehicles are restored for 90 days for any farmer quarter.
Basically, we can use the barns, the state house, we're putting the plastic back on that greenhouse on the current fair road. They built it in the wall today, actually. So we're going to put, try to use that for a case storage that will open up more space in that barn.
Just keep that in mind, we may have an availability there for indoor crops.
It's a cost. We can, I think we have some flexibility in the program to go there too, especially the dry goods.
Well, let's recap. So Andy and Crystal are going to start working on the money end internally and with the city. And then Joe's vision, we're going to start trying to make a reality, working with Tim and Kevin. Does anybody jump in if I'm saying something that's- Does anybody jump in if I'm saying something that's not realistic or where we're going? And Joe's gonna work with his instructors on what do we need and what more can we possibly get? And so, we got the bids coming in, you said Thursday?
Uh, the twenty-fourth, next Wednesday.
Next, okay, next Wednesday, and then potentially by the end of the week, you'll have, how quickly can you get somebody on board?
Well, so, they have, they have, they say it's three days, and then whenever, as soon as we've signed a contract, it's there.
Well, that's, again, how quickly can that process happen?
So, we would have to wait for a board meeting to vote to, for the plan.
To accept it.
So, we coming down the road, twenty-fourth, probably the following week, because we have to have a meeting, then circular contract. No, we're saying, because we'll meet with the company on the twenty-fourth, I mean, we'll get the bids on the twenty-fourth, depending on what the funding source that we'll be using, the, towards the insurance account, okay, so then we don't have to decide. So then we will find our contract, come to the trustees, forty-eight hours, once we've done the vendors, then the contract's sorted, still two weeks, yeah, give or take. We can put a rush on it with the city, ask them.
I'm sorry, why do we need a board meeting?
We don't, you know, I just, because we talked about the, the network charge towards the insurance.
It's gonna be as fast as a contract, and everybody signs it.
Forty-eight hours within the trustees.
And then the whole document signing process.
So, in theory, it could be, yes, we only got on Wednesday. You could have a guy here at the end of the next week, on Thursday, right, and everything, it must be very, very fine, assigned, close to sign.
You're gonna take that, a week, say a week, to demo cleanup?
I don't know, at what point, if they down the hard stuff, and we're pumping, see, let us go back in there, the building was all set, you know, and they, I mean, there's not much there.
Right.
They take it down, they have it down, stuck in a box, that first day.
Yeah, that first day.
Yeah, and at that point, it's okay, we'll clear, you know, make sure you clear away from the, from the back, where you're keeping, and then just start class, use the classrooms.
Okay, so, we've got some stuff settled now, are you comfortable on, Kevin, you comfortable with the information you've heard today to continue to work with Joe and his team? Where are we at?
And we have a contract with you, correct, with the, hesitant, yeah, but.
Yes.
So, you're gonna keep moving, right?
We are.
I mean, you were talking about parallel paths, so I assume that the kind of new building is still, is off table at this point, like the one that we were kind of planning for with this. Well, kind of depending what the city wants, right, because you're still unknown, but the city came up and said, we'll give you six million dollars.
So, you are kind of in a holding pattern without really knowing that information, yes, no?
Yeah, I mean, we could move forward with the existing building and try and plan something around that, you know, and that's what you want to do. And that, that becomes like the favored, you know, path, because it's portable, and, you know, I mean, I know you can't know what you're gonna expect to get out of the city.
Right, well, I think in practicality and realistically, that's the path we need to take right now. Does everybody concur? Joe?
Is there, is there, is there a way, Kevin was just talking to me on the side, is there a way to do maybe two or three plans concurrently? Like, could Kevin's team look at, okay, how do we redesign and build off that, but also, what if we were able to take it down and plop something new on there, but maintain the greenhouse? Kevin then just also asked about, is there, has anybody yet thought about our possibility of putting one or two classrooms onto the GCC building, GCC building, which would free up space on the upper side?
That was a question I asked Tim earlier, he said that.
That GCC was, you know, and back the way from, I don't know if it was the elevation size, or if the septic lines down there, or what held them off.
Does any sense for modular classrooms during this process, does that make any sense? As expense that you spend out, you have no return on sites, instructional space for that period?
From my perspective, classroom-wise, I, we may have to talk about it next summer. I think this year we'll be fine, based on the timelines, I mean, we have a plan pending the grant to renovate that building to make it the new animal science building, which will ship kids out, which will, so, there's phases of that renovation to fully get companion animal in. I think that we have planned out in three phases, that we can make work during the school year that will have minimum impact on the structure. But depending on where we go with this building, and maybe next year is the time that we have to question around maybe a temporary garage space, or, you know, almost like tents, or larger classroom, we'll have to see, because our student body is growing. So, if this is a major construction that crosses over the school year, then we may have to discuss it next, next major.
The other thing we have to keep in our concept here is the new dog kennel that the city's putting, we're building up here also, what can we tap off of that? Is there any extra that we could put a classroom, or put a, an additional space that you may require that ties in with the animal training that we can justify coming out of that, that the city may be able to hold as well? So, that's a thought process of just thinking about that, because some of this is gonna coincide with our building, that they're gonna someday call and say, we're ready to.
I wonder, if infrastructure-wise, if they're paying to have all that infrastructure and power and stuff brought to that building, is there a way for us to tap off?
Right.
To build, you know, if we are gonna have, you know, hoop house greenhouses or something, is there a way just to come from there? It might, it might be easier than coming down the line with a permanent.
Let me ask you a question now, if someone's designing, they're asking all those questions right now.
What's gonna come off of it?
I don't know. Is Central Service doing that?
Yeah. Do we have any, did you answer?
And if they're gonna do improvements in the sewer, does that open up?
Or some opportunity for us? They haven't even asked any of those questions yet, so, I'll call down there and ask.
Yeah, it would be a good idea to find out what their timeline is, how they're moving forward, how can we dovetail with them and get something out of this, obviously. Okay, all right, so then, back to Kevin, you've got stuff you can work on?
Well, I think, you know, I think Joe and I can develop a revised program, you know, based on what's gonna shift out of this building, that we're talking about. And then, you know, once we get that figured out, then we can look at options for adding on to the existing building, the four building, you know, that's a, that's a possibility.
Okay.
Because I think we can keep it fairly similar, you know, whatever we add on, we can keep it into one addition, it's gotta be better than two.
Okay, so, we'll work at the point of adjournment for today, everybody have, make it work. Margin orders in a sense, fast to accomplish.
I think you're all set.
And I think, yeah, just project me out to the two meetings, really, I don't want to waste my time. Are we comfortable, Kevin and team, meeting on the thirtieth, if we all have an updated scope with, with Joe between now and the thirtieth? You know, Crystal and I will hopefully have some type of response from the city, then you may have an update as far as this forestry.
I think I'll call it.
So, we'll still keep the thirtieth on the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, the figure.
Yeah, let's keep it on the table, we gotta, get rid of it, we get rid of it. So, yeah, because I need to plan for these things, because of my schedule, so, I gotta plan for it, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but, you know, you've got Carl's excavating, you've got Deeds, I know both of them, so, but you have contacts, right? Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, I was, I kind of put this together, just thinking about how big the building was going to be on this site, because we're kind of expanding out beyond the boundaries, and I know that you're sort of kind of taking over roadways, but, you know, if you think about greenhouses taking off this part of the land, you know, it really starts to conflict with that, that part of the land. So, I was just kind of looking at the different areas, and, you know, one of them was, just going back to the conversation with Ben and Joe, you know, there is some area here, yes, it kind of scopes up to the, for the football field, but, you know, it's a possibility for another option. So, you know, for, we've had two options, maybe putting an addition on this building, or adding on to this building, you know, once we develop a program, we can come up with those two options for, you know, and forward.
Can they handle patrol facility, Kevin, that they can refer to, they sort of down where C and D, around the lower part, that's kind of where they're thinking, now patrol facility is going.
Down here.
Right where that road is, you have the highlight, yeah, basically that whole section, that whole section, where those trees, those trees be gone? That's what, what they think. Just as a ground explanation. When you write that B section, eventually slips up to the football field, and elevation also drops off from the building that isn't highlighted, that's what, Tim, you're, that's your concern, correct? If we were to build off the same elevation that GCC building, there's a big drop, and there'll be a lot of pillars. Right now, I think that A, A's on the best after us.
All right, so, I guess we're ready to adjourn?
Two of you want to have an update, you want to do the vision of the animal science, the visions?
Yes.
Do you have that in your mind?
Yeah, it's not quite extending more of Kevin's time, I did have other property committee issues, and we're all gathered. Tim, you've had some more time? All right, thank you, Kevin, and Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So, just to bring all of you up to speed, as far as the actual plans or the expansion of the animal science. We plan to revive, we renovate the, 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 that will turn into more appropriate two classrooms, instructor office space, locker room space, washroom space. As soon as that is done, the animal science is basically classroom space down to that, that then frees up, currently using the MS classroom.
So, you're.
Thank you, hold on, so, renovate the GCC slash old rec building for animal science, I'm just breaking it down, no specifics, and what's the potential timeline on that?
Hopefully, the fall semester, we're gonna meet with the instructors in the first week of school, that student instructors that'll support that, I think, Tim was also gonna see if custodial and farm techs could help with the demo part of it, and they could just come in and do the renovation part.
On whose day?
Carpentry. Carpentry, cabin making, electrical.
Yeah, okay.
One thing, as far as these other programs that we do in regards to habitat, or stuff like that, we're gonna put those on there.
To some extent, yes. In speaking with Chad at the end of the year, and the plumbers, Chad's gonna have a full, so we've got a second carpentry instructor, so, that shop has now two instructors, which frees Chad up with the upper classroom, I mean, he's got a full, almost, he's got, he's gonna have students on both weeks now, whereas in the past, he was only able to do stuff on like the senior week.
Right.
So, now he'll be able to do work on junior, seniors, so in talking with him, he felt confident that he could take on more projects around campus, because he's gonna have, you know, six, eight kids that can work, and he's gonna have that every week. And with the other instructor being able to handle the ninth grade, the tenth grade, and they didn't have instructor, has experience as a carpentry instructor elsewhere, so it shouldn't be that much of a.
Okay.
So, he'll, he's confident he can handle more work, but, yes, he hasn't fully committed with them for any additional buildings.
So, what are, what is carpentry committed to now, are they working with habitat out on Burke's pit, is anything?
They have some, some work, but the last time I spoke to him, he wasn't anticipating much in the fall. He felt confident that he could help in that building, he could also felt confident that they could also help with the healthcare center, with its fundings.
Do we know anything of the funding of the healthcare?
I had a meeting with their team late last week, they hired a fundraising assistant, they're working down to find, much of our contacts, advisory members, missed a lot of contacts, we felt the school, so, we need to cover this.
You just shared something I was surprised by, that we're sharing our contacts with them, I thought there were discussions somewhere at some point that we were hesitant to, because we would be going to the same level, so.
We're not sharing the horticulture advisory members.
Okay, okay, all right.
Those might be the contact, you may have.
All right, so, we're helping in some way as we can without.
Overstep.
Okay, perfect, that's, thank you, all right.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify something that I had said earlier, I just spoke with Joe Cook, if, as long as the bid comes under twenty-five thousand, I can issue a purchaser agreement, I have to go ahead. So, that will save us time.
Yeah, yeah, that's a little easier.
We referenced the PO, and we could solidify it with.
For which piece?
The demo.
Demo.
Where we thought we had to do the.
Executed that day. Okay.
So, that's phase one, is to get the GCC renovation done as soon as possible, that includes the two classrooms, teacher office space, locker room space, laundry. Sorry, but at the same time, the hope would be that pig pens would be built in the dairy barn, so that once that phase one was over, pigs could be moved there, rabbits could be, if that's necessary, that's in the current nursery. As Joe was alluding to, once we get those kids moved out, right now, we're currently using the MS classroom and the nursery barn, which will have this temporary classroom set up, so, pull the kids out. As Joe said, if we can renovate the dairy barn down below, the pigs down there, that has now vacated the nursery barn. The concept right now is potentially take the nursery barn down, work with an architect, we can build, that would become the dog grooming, pardon, that space. While we also renovate the MS classroom space, that would now be vacated, that would become the pocket pet, basically, we can handle small animals, go into the, the classroom. There'll be a small space agent off of that, so, we want to keep the farm tech office where it is, but we need to have quarantine space, because if small animals come in, they can quarantine for a period of time, there'll be a small space built off of that classroom. So, the MS classroom turns into the small animal lab, the nursery barn is rebuilt to be the dog kennel and grooming area, and down below, underneath the dairy barn, becomes the pigs and other animals, and the MS barn continues to be a little bit of a species farm. We're also looking at outfitting some horse stalls, so we can continue to expand the viewpoint of the. So, that, the grants we're writing right now, that Joe and Melanie submitted, truly target that animal science piece, because then hopefully, we do that grant, even though it's being applied to animal science, I was gonna go. Because then hopefully we can, that grant, even though it's being applied to animal science, I was going to go in front of the board anyhow before the fire, I was going to go in front of the board and ask for a tuition volume. Help with this renovation. If we can use the grant money for these renovation projects, I can stand in front of the board and ask for tuition volume money to provide that portfolio.
A gentleman by the name of Barry Roberts, Barry, this great guy, I was in the KKK. Barry talked to me personally about the fire, also about the E coin program expansion. He has very, very, very deep pockets. I would not be the first, if I could talk to him, if you gave me a number, what, what would help? I think he would possibly step up to help us. He loves the school, wants to do anything he can. I mean, we could use him on the E coins side, let him build that program monetarily, or we can talk to him about a contribution right there.
So we'd be looking, I don't know money wise, but we'd be looking at four, four stalls. Probably renovate the small barn that's off the back, the shed barn that houses them and rebuild the pad in the back.
Okay, what about?
I don't know what that would. I don't know what the cost would be.
I just said, I'm going to meet you with Barry to come over, we can walk through, close out. Just open the door, that's all. Got to get through the fair and all that kind of stuff. I don't want to bring much up plates or anything.
And then once that's done, we can expand the four horses room too.
Okay. He definitely will help us with that one, so.
All right. My other big picture property committee issue is, I know the school owns a lot, or stewards of a lot of property, such as hospital bill stewardship. I know a bit about that, but I feel I need to know more. I'd like to, must have some site plans of some sort of what's under our jurisdiction and what we're doing with the property. I happened to ride by the Birds Pit property on Sunday on my bike. Looked like that farm area there where the barns are and the compost pile is, it looked like the compost pile had just been reworked or kneaded up.
Well, Rich moved one of the piles, it's condensed.
Okay.
Getting ready to rebuild the pad there.
And so how does the composting program work? Is it stuff we get from here goes up there?
Originally it was, we were taking outside material from restaurants and then we kind of went back to put, we produce the capital. Take a bunch of leaves from the top, wherever they happen to be, segue on the rest of the road. So that's pretty much where we are now, our open to work and city leaves.
So your, your team maintains that piece of property? And that all the fields have been recently cut by the looks of it? So, yeah, I just wanted to get more knowledge of what happens here.
Right.
And everything, so my, where I'm going with this, Tim, is I'd like to get together, well, I'd like to get the site plans, like to review them, see what our stewardships of our, start to learn more of the whole process. So I can be a better board member, whatever. I feel, I feel a little lost, to be honest with you.
I know it's a lot. The St. Stages had its survey line up last year, so I have plans for that.
Great, okay.
Tim, maybe you can talk about the last five years, basically reclaim that side of the, of the street.
Right, they've been working to push back the fence line, you know, the previous farmer, where, you know, the brush kept going in, trees kept growing in, everything felt, or needed to be backgrounded. So they've been working pretty hard to push everything back to the original fence lines.
Who's they?
Farm crew.
Farm crew, okay.
Reclaim that land, they build fences, you build behind there.
What I call Sunset Hill, if you're coming up from community gardens, you come up the hill and you turn, you got the jail over here, that piece there I call Sunset Hill. As I go up there, watch sunset and moonrise. And that whole piece of property, some years back, had kind of gone into overgrown stage. And now I see it's really maintained. So we have new fences pretty much all the way around.
We hired an excavator a minute in that brush.
So who did the fence work? Did that?
The farmer.
The farmer, so this is all being done in-house? Awesome. Okay. All right, so.
The next phase for Tim is they're rebuilding that garage and the roof, so a pad in the, in the roof.
Being around the subject, Tim and I met with Barbara Hopson recently down the backside of, off of Birds Pit Road, down by the water, with the dog park. That I use that term.
People walk dogs.
People walk, come across that water and they come down off that hill. That Wayne Fiden wanted to bring in and pave that whole area and make it useful year round for bicycles and for people walking and all that. Barbara Hopson asked our view on that. And I told her that liability wise, that we do not want to take on that liability. And she said that the city was going to have a meeting, that we needed to express that to the city. Does anybody have any knowledge of the meeting or, all right, so I think I need to talk to Wayne Fiden's friend.
Well, Carolyn's not, Carolyn's been appointed. Chairperson, whatever.
Apparently there's a third party involved in this whole process that is a fight group that's within the city.
Well, that would be George's group or MFT.
But I'm just, I think there's.
I thought there was another group, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I thought there was another group that was trying to, wasn't there another group that was trying to plant trees and things that block people from coming in there? Like we've been doing erosion control down there because we're losing that bank.
So down there on the riverbank, we, a couple of years ago, we worked with another group, it's in college, planned to replant the riverbank and fence it all off, the dog park. That was a disaster, that just, it was fenced out.
Yeah, we had signs up there saying erosion control, stay off, nobody respected it.
And there's other citizens that kind of helped us out, you know, like they donated trees and planted them along the dog park and put those mistakes in the stuff, you would park more if they wanted. So I'm doing that, that's kind of why the paved road was up there against because we haven't been able to control it there, yet we want to make more access.
More accessibility for more people.
Right, right.
I'll follow up with Carolyn.
Well, the natural space is being degraded, so I know there's people that want to be out there to enjoy the natural space, but they're doing hard.
There's so many different groups that have what they think rights to, you know, the visitor frisbee golf, there's the running club, the running club, which they're, they're actually really good at doing, they are.
Now, there's another running club, is it that wants access to?
Well, Sure, Sure Love was Tuesday, it's back, it was Tuesday night, it was like five o'clock. And, and, yeah, you got the frisbee golf course, we've gone through there a couple of times. It's pretty cool, actually. No, we got this great resource and, and the public is utilizing it. And obviously, it's under our jurisdiction in reality, right?
We're supposed to be controlling it forward, we're supposed to be using it, we have control.
Well, that's the other thing, do, do.
That's a good term.
Yeah, that's another piece of the puzzle. How, how involved do we get? How involved do we say, all right, people, you're, you're, you're trashing our property?
I think over the last nine years that I've been here, that, that question's gone to revolution.
Right.
And there hasn't been support from the enforcement or city. So a lot of us have, you know, from my perspective, educationally, I'm not really involved in that land. We did try to have students go up there and, and other things, but, I mean, we had goats up there that were attacked by people's animals. We've had other animals attack people, bite at people. For a while, Kevin was trying to go up there on a regular basis. But it wasn't, it wasn't a safe situation for him.
Barbara Hopson recommended.
So we've kind of pulled out of there and from my perspective, you know, I don't look at it as an educational space anymore.
You deal with the, each of you, you know, with all this stuff, so.
Well, I know full, full, where it goes on.
Barbara Hopson did recommend that she was going to contact the Christian Day Department to help control that. To try and go in and get some control back from their side in regards to the way damage is being done and, and what, what is legal and what's not. And she also recommended, and Joe Brewer was involved in some conversation about this coming year, about whether criminal justice students in regards to just touring through there, not asking to stop people, not doing any of that.
I would strongly push back on student involvement.
People get very heated, very heated really quick when you start talking about, you know, people.
Can I share something? I allow you to share something? Can I share something just to, sorry, I just got a call in the, in July. People assume the worst up there all the time. So like, for example, there was a kid up there blowing donuts in the parking lot. And the person called and wanted to say to me that it was my, our kid, that we were up there and the kid got in an argument with somebody. I get more calls like that where the public is very upset at us, thinking that anyone up there is a representative of Smith, than I do any positive stuff that comes out of that. And that happens on a fairly regular basis. If I looked at my phone log, I would say I get somewhere between four and six calls a year from somebody very angry with no background information or anything that would support their idea that it's one of our kids or one of our representatives that's up there causing them problems. So it's an interesting dynamic that we have to deal with semi regularly.
All right, well, I feel part of my responsibility, being chair of the property committee, I need to know what's going on, plain and simple. And what's our role in all this? And do, do we have a meeting with, with police? You know, I guess I need to start gathering information so I know how to move forward in a sense. And because I grew up going through that property, I, today I still cross country ski and mountain bike up through there. And I know the evolution, everything that's gone on around there. And I'm supportive of the public being able to use the property, but, you know, what, what is our role? What is our responsibility? And I don't really know. So I guess I'll start finding that out. All right.
You know, during COVID, when it first hit, they shut it down, first time over, the parking lot closed. And that's still, it was still.
Oh, yeah. All right. Okay, so anything else, anybody? Can I get together with you, site plans, start looking over stuff and start getting more educated? Everybody feel something came worthwhile, came out of this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we get together, uh, two weeks from now?